Good morning. Welcome to our Minnehaha County Commission meeting for December 31st. Happy old year. I'm going to call our meeting to order. Note that we do have a full quorum of commission members present. And before we get started, just silence your cellphone and avoid any embarrassment. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started with the routine business, I'm going to be remiss if I didn't point out the smile on Commissioner Bender's face this morning as it is her last meeting. And I just want to thank her for 10 years up here on the dais. She's been commission chair many years. She's been a steady hand and just a great colleague to all of us. We're definitely going to miss her. Commissioner, your leadership has been impactful and appreciated. Want to say anything now or you want to wait till the end of the meeting? Any words at all?
I wasn't planning on saying anything, period. So, well, thank you. That's very kind. It's been a great honor and privilege to serve the citizens of Minnehaha County. There's a lot of people in this room that I've come to really appreciate and admire, and all of whom I've been deeply indebted to for teaching me so much and being so patient with me. I will miss this all very much. But all good things come to an end and it's time to let somebody else have a chance to serve. And I would just like to put in a shameless plug for all people to get involved and serve. There's a great need for people who are committed and are willing to put in the work. And we are all living in a place that is as great a place as there is to live because of people before us that were willing to serve. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, moving on now to look for a motion to approve our agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Moving on now to our consent agenda is, our consent agenda has our, kind of our routine business, bills to be paid, personnel actions, that type of thing. Anybody from the public like to comment on the consent agenda? All right, commission, anybody want to pull any item off the consent agenda? And I'd look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on now to our regular business. Our first item is Sioux Metro Growth Alliance presentation. We have a couple of members here, Tyler Tartsen and Bryce Healy. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Commissioners Tyler Tartsen, Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. Just want to, for those listening online in the room too, Sioux Metro Growth Alliance was the state's largest regional nonprofit economic development organization, which is also a mouthful to say, but we're proud of it. We also want to start off by just saying thank you too for the longstanding support, the collaboration and partnership with the county going on 33, heading into 34 years now. So, thank you for that. Just kind of recapping a little bit for you, we've had a great 2024. We've had some tremendous events, some new connections, some additional growth and prospect activity as well too. One thing that I wanted to hit on while I was before you today is back at the April Commission meeting, one of your guys' April Commission meetings I mentioned, Congressional Grant Award that we got for a Minnehaha County Regional Wastewater Project. And I just wanted to share just a brief update on that, just that it's a long process with a lot of steps and federal processes that must be followed, but the conversations are still ongoing with the communities of Crooks, Colton, Hartford, Lyons, and additional stakeholders too. And we'll make sure to keep you guys updated as we continue progress on that project just because it has so much potential to impact growth in our rural communities in the county for decades to come too. This still, the Sioux Metro area still remains one of the fastest growing metro regions in the whole country. There's just so much to be proud of and we're looking forward to 2025 too. I mean, things are looking up, just in my opinion too. Even since the election, I think we've noticed a little bit of an uptick in activity and an interest in projects and people looking to move forward with some of their kind of growth plans. And so, again, looking forward to 2025 with our events and some of the things that we have coming up. And then with me too, I got Bryce Healy on our staff and just wanted him to be able to say hi to you guys as well.
First and foremost, Happy New Year, Commission. Congratulations, Commissioner Bender. I'm sure you will look forward to your now free time that you'll have. Tyler has done a great job of outlining what has happened in '24, what's going to happen in '25.
Bryce, I need you to introduce yourself.
Sorry, Bryce Healy with Sioux Metro Growth Alliance.
Thank you.
Sorry, Chair. Some of the things, and Tyler does a great job of explaining this over time, but we meet the 16 communities that we represent in the Sioux Metro where they are. And some of it's economic development and some of it is government relations and some of it is just simply helping staff, organizations that are there. But along with that, in the last year, things that you may, I'm sure you do all are aware of, things that happened in the 16, eight communities around Sioux Falls in the Minnehaha County. Colton has new housing development. Brand, or Baltic, has two new housing developments going on, new schools, many different businesses going on in the Sioux Metro. So, if you have not had the chance, and I'm sure most of you have, but if you've not had the chance to get out into the rural communities of Sioux Falls Metro, Minnehaha County, please do because you will find fantastic gems that are out there for all of you to see and experience in 2025.
That's all we have too, but happy to answer any questions. We know you guys have a big agenda in front of you and we'll be here a couple of times throughout 2025 too to continue to share updates with you all.
Appreciate the updates. We do take public comment. Anybody want to comment on this agenda item? All right, gentlemen, appreciate the update. I gave the two of them our last county news magazine. There's an interesting article in there on data centers and, you know, what economic development looks like. Data centers are definitely part of that, so it's probably going to be an ongoing conversation. So, thank you again. Commission, any questions, comments? All righty, moving on then. Appointments to the Planning Commission, we have two of them, Scott Anderson, our Planning Director. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning, Scott Anderson, Planning Director. And as I indicated in the memo, there are two Planning Commissioners whose terms expire today. And we went through a process, working with the Commission Office, of sending out press releases, making the public notice, making the public aware of the opportunity to serve as Gene has indicated. And we luckily had six people apply for the two positions that we need to reappoint for next year. These are, would be a four-year term, so their terms would go through the end of 2028. I invited each of the candidates to attend the meeting today, and I know there are several in the audience, so I would be glad to answer any questions. But I'd ask that you appoint, select two of the six candidates or anyone else that you so desire, but we, I'd like to have, ask that you fill those two positions.
All righty. Commission, I'm going to kind of turn it over to you real quick for suggestions. Do you want to hear from any candidates? Do you want to hear public comment first? But what would your preferences be?
Yeah, I think if any of the candidates are present and want to, and just general public comment, we can take all of that.
Okay. So, anybody, any of the candidates, I know we have a few here, any of them want to take the opportunity to get up and address the commission? Good morning. Please introduce yourself.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Rick Bonander from Valley Springs. Thank you for this opportunity to express why I would like to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission. As a fifth generation resident of Minnehaha County, I've seen firsthand how intelligent planning can lead to intelligent growth of the county. That leads to quality of life, good-paying jobs, and a strong tax base for the county. This all goes back to intelligent land use. And this is a desire that I would have, is be part of the Planning Commission so we can make intelligent decisions and continue the growth that we have in this county. It's very impressive. So, I thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be available.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Cindy Heiburger, rural resident of Minnehaha County. I applied for this just because I feel like I have a good understanding of what our Planning and Zoning Department did. I spent 12 years on Minnehaha County Commission. Before that, I spent several years studying Minnehaha County Government with the task force that looked at home rule in the early 2000s. I'm a rural resident. I own farm ground. I own building eligibility's. I understand the importance of agriculture, but also the importance of our rural communities who are all growing and, like they've said, like Rick said, our tax base. But we need to have responsible growth around those municipalities and around the agricultural area to make sure that they're working well together. So, thank you and I'll be here for questions if needed. Thank you.
I personally feel that the Planning Commission does a lot of heavy lifting for the County Commission and most of the stuff they do doesn't have to come before us because of the work that they do, the time that they spend talking to the citizens. Every once in a while, we get to talk a little bit more about what their actions are, but it's few and far between when you really look at their full agenda. So, to the entire Planning Commission, I just extend my thanks for the work that they do and I thank the people that took the time to complete an application and express their interest. We do have to pick two of the six and at this point, I'm going to turn it over to public comment. Anybody else from the public want to comment to the commission about this agenda item? All right, Commissioners, the ball is in your court.
Mr. Chair, I'll put out my initial thoughts here. The couple candidates that rose to the top for me, I think we, it's good that we have multiple applicants and I think that's something to consider in the big picture going forward. But we had, Ryan Vander Vliet has been on the commission and applied to re-up his term and he has served very well, represents Northwest rural, probably the most rural part of Minnehaha County. So, I would lean towards re-upping him. And then also, I would just acknowledge my predecessor, Cindy Heiburger, on the commission served as a great mentor to me and a lot of institutional knowledge there. And I told her when she came off the commission, much like I might have a similar conversation with my colleague Gene Bender, is to stay involved in some way or some form or fashion and pass along your institutional knowledge. And she took all of a one or two-year break and is back at it here. So, I appreciate her applying and would love to, as I plan on being the liaison to the Planning Department, would love to serve with Cindy and have her leadership on the Planning Commission as well. So, those are the two that rose to the top for me. I would just note that we did get multiple applicants and we might need to consider things like a formal term limit or whatnot. I, again, am in favor of my friend Ryan continuing on, but if we're going to have applicants from the community and eventually we'd want some new blood on the Planning Commission, that might be something we look at for whose terms are coming up and if they intend to re-up those or if we want to install term limits to allow for new people to get involved. But just to kick off the conversation with my colleagues up here, those are the two names that I'd be prepared to nominate.
Okay, I think our proper method of doing this would be to select individuals one at a time instead of taking two and voting on them, but to do one at a time. Scott, Commissioner Kipli brings up an interesting point on term limits and number of terms, et cetera. Is there anything in any resolution anywhere that says this is how long you can serve or that type of thing?
No.
Okay.
Simple answer. No, there is nothing in the previous county ordinances, resolutions, or bylaws that indicate you are term limited on the Planning Commission.
Should that be part of the envisioned 2045? I mean, could that be part of that?
Well, that, it's a discussion you can have, but it's not, the comprehensive plan, the envisioned 2045 would not be the place where we would address internal policies like that.
Okay, okay. All right. So, Commissioner Kipli has advanced at least two names. Anybody else want to have that discussion? Commissioner Blainberg?
Thank you. I would like to echo Commissioner Kipli's statements and also just a big thank you to everyone who did apply because I feel like the number of applicants and the qualified applicants that we have is a big asset to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And it was a tough decision to consider because we do have multiple qualified applicants who are involved in service throughout the county already, specifically Mr. Bonander who's here today, who spoke. I've had the privilege of serving with him on the Conservation District Board and he was recently elected to the East Dakota Water District Board and I think would be a great asset. And so, I appreciate the applications, but I would have to echo, and I know you asked for one at a time, so I could make a motion.
Let's see, we have further comments, Commissioner Benega or Bender, anything to add? Okay, we'll take them one at a time then.
Okay, I'll make the motion to reappoint Ryan Vander Vliet.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second for Ryan Vander Vliet to the Minnehaha Planning Commission. Roll call, vote.
Kipli.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. So, we have one now, a second.
I would nominate Cindy Heiburger.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for former Commissioner Cindy Heiburger to the Planning Commission. Further discussion? Call the roll.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you for everybody for that expressed an interest and congratulations to the two that want to do the extra work. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Monday night, 7 o'clock till, oh, dark 30 a lot of times. Only once a month though. All right, moving on to our agenda, authorize a chair to sign the Coliseum lease agreement between Minnehaha County Lutheran Social Services of South Dakota and the city of Sioux Falls. Commissioner Kipli will be recusing himself from this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Greco.
Good morning, Commission. Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer. So, the lease agreement before you is for the Coliseum. It's a lease agreement between, as the Chair noted, Lutheran Social Services, the city of Sioux Falls, and Minnehaha County. As background, as background, we've had a relationship, the Multicultural Center, when it was its own nonprofit organization, has been housed essentially in the Coliseum for approximately two decades now. So, since 2002, when a joint powers agreement was first signed between the Multicultural Center, city of Sioux Falls, and Minnehaha County, the state was also part of that. We've had a relationship with that organization. In October 2022, the Multicultural Center merged into Lutheran Social Services. That was a good move, obviously supported by many in the community. In 2022, the original agreement obviously expired with that new organization. So, what we've done here is we've redrawn the lease agreement to be between the county, Lutheran Social Services, which now has the Multicultural Center as part of its programming, and the city of Sioux Falls. Just want to highlight some key points of the lease agreement. Number one, it is for a term of one year, so would expire at the end of 2025. The county, under the terms, would generally care for the structure of the facility, the Coliseum, while the lessee would provide programming and activities that align with the mission of the Multicultural Center. They would also keep the facility in good working order and condition and will provide the county with an update annually on use of the facility. Also want to point out that, under the terms of this agreement, the city agrees to pay utilities for this past year, just as, for reference, for this past year, the city paid $55,000 for the cost of utilities in the Coliseum. Rebecca Kiesal Knutson with Lutheran Social Services is here. If you do have any questions for her, but I would recommend approval of this lease agreement for the Multicultural Center's use.
Thank you, Tom. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? All right. Rebecca, any, want to get up? Okay, no problem. Commission, I'll turn it over to you for action.
Go ahead.
I'd just say this has been a relationship that has worked well for many years now. I don't see any reason not to continue it. It really serves a population that is in need and so I'd make a motion to approve.
I would second that. I think the relationship has been excellent and I appreciate the fact that LSS stepped up when we needed that support and has continued to operate at a very high level.
I agree. It's the right facility in the right place for the services that are being provided. So, no additional comments? Please call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on, our 2024 general election briefing, Auditor Anderson. Good morning, Leah.
My briefing memo was rather brief because most of my information is in my PowerPoint. So, I'm going to initially walk through some of the things that occur in preparing for the elections and specifically this election. And then, as I get to the end, of course, there will be time for questions and comments, but I also will have a section about observations, improvements, and then also some legislative changes that we can hopefully work towards. So, I'm going to just begin here. Papers organized. Again, I'm Leah Anderson, Minnehaha County Auditor. So, beginning in about mid-August is when we started planning for this election. And we did the drawing for candidate placement. We also were waiting for the state to do their drawing and certification for candidates. That delayed us a little bit in getting into where we actually order ballots because of the race for the independent presidential candidate. So, we also created the precincts and the ballot splits in the ESNS portal. We do the pronunciation for the Express Vote marking device. That's a, it reads to people, so we have to do that. And then finally, we get to the point where, towards the end of August, we are proofing ballots, making sure that they look correct, that all the candidates are on the ballot and all the races are on the ballot. And then we sign off on that and begin placing our orders. So, we placed our ballot order, the initial one, around August 29th. Then we move into, there, now it's advancing. Okay, so on September 20th, that was the first day of absentee voting. So, we, due to our six-month limitation on seasonal workers, I couldn't really bring back our workers until just the Monday prior to that September 20th absentee day. Everybody worked very hard to get everything done in order for us to be prepared for the 20th. That week was a busy week. We had our seasonal staff assisting in entering voter registrations, absentee requests, and also the setup of our in-person absentee area. The days between that, the 16th to the 20th, we were also working on verifying and going through the initial absentee requests that we had received, which at the time was only about 3,590 ballot requests. So, on the 20th, we mailed out the 3,590 ballots and then we also sent out emails for approximately 572 emailed ballots. We, that also was the deadline for our central committees, the county central committees, like the Republican and the Democrat Party, to provide us with a list of workers that they would want to suggest. Neither party provided anything. In fact, I was a little disappointed and I hope in the future we can have improvement in that area to get our county parties involved in helping us recruit and select our workers for our elections. So, we move on to the dates between approximately September 21st and October 21st. So, Mike and along with myself, we began coordinating and assigning our election workers. We prepared the appointment letters and then also began preparing for our election worker training. We ended up sending appointment letters out approximately three times because we had so many changes of people contacting us and so that took up a lot of time. We had, initially, we had 363 precinct board workers. We had 57 plus an additional approximately 25 absentee board workers and then 14 plus extra Resolution Board workers. We held nine election training sessions. What those look like as we gather in this room, and we have anywhere from maybe 25 to 60 people show up for election worker training and that training is for two, held for two hours. On those nine sessions, we did both afternoon sessions and evening sessions. So, during that time, myself and Mike and then also a representative from the state's attorney's office were present for those training sessions. I conducted all of the training sessions myself and that also took up a lot of time. We were here late those nine nights till about 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night. We had a high volume of mail throughout the absentee period. So, mail would come in in just mass quantities. There would be days where we'd have 100 to 200 voter registrations or absentee request forms. Also during that time, we visited approximately 28 care facilities over a two-week period and conducted the in-person absentee voting with them. A new introduction that we did this time, both for this election and the primary, was we took the Express Vote, the Express Vote marking device to them because that's the clientele or the population that could most benefit from using those Express Vote devices. I will say that they were more receptive at the general election in using those machines versus the primary. A few things also during that timeframe, we had all of our tests, a lot of our testing during that timeframe. So, our first mock election test was on October 16th. That was when we connect with the state. We also had various legal notices that had to be published during that timeframe. And then our final day for voter registration was on October 21st. That was an extremely busy day. We had lines both upstairs here on third floor for voting and then also very consistent lines down at our window. I would say we pretty much had to have someone at all three windows all the time because people were consistently stopping in to get their voter registration forms in. Moving to after voter registration deadline. So, on, from October 22nd to the 31st, we were pretty busy just getting caught up with all the voter registration forms that were turned in and the absentee request forms. What I noticed with the postal service is it seemed like our postal service was not doing an outstanding job and we would receive maybe one person doing an outstanding job, and we would receive maybe one person, if a couple mailed their absentee request forms or their ballots back to us on one day, the same day. We might get one and then two weeks later, see the other one come in. So I'm not sure what their problem was, but it created a bit of panic among our absentee voters. And so this also created a large, a volume of phone calls and also sending out replacement ballots to people that thought that they were never going to get their ballot or we weren't going to receive it back. We did additional tabulation testing during this timeframe. Our second mock election test was conducted on the 23rd, and then we did our public test on the 31st. In addition to those tests, I wanted to create a more extensive test deck. ESNS only provides us with one option, and that, well, two. We can get blank test ballots, and we can also get what they call a one-to-max test deck. A one-to-max test deck does not give us the variety or the randomness in testing that we would like to see. So I, along with assistance from Rick Wyble, he's developed a lot of methods to create a better, more robust test deck. So I worked with him to get that created, and we ordered blank test ballots. And then I also worked in conjunction with SD Canvassing and some volunteers to come in and hand-mark those test decks so that we would be prepared to run those. So they hand-marked them, and they also hand-counted them. So when ESNS presents us with their test deck, they can give us the results that we should expect. But when we're hand-marking test ballots, we don't have a result sheet that we can go by necessarily. We have what we created them with, but then we still have to go back and count and make sure that they are correct. So we just, we did additional testing so that both I would be confident in what we were doing and also the public could be confident in all of that testing. So November 1st was a very unusual day. That was the day that we had a large number of people voting. It was a Friday, so third floor was very full. The hall was, the line was wrapped around the hallway. And then at approximately 11:00 or 11:30, we figured out that Total Vote had crashed. And so Total Vote is the system that we utilize through the state, both for voter registration and also for conducting our in-person absentee voting. So we have to look up the voter in Total Vote in order to process their ballot when they come up to vote. So that crash created a problem. The line stood still for approximately an hour. Most people that were in line did not want to leave. They wanted to stay and wait, and we had no word on how long this was going to take. So I was thankful that Mike, our election coordinator, came running up with a laptop and said, "I have a backup of the voter registration list," because normally we don't have those backups, but he had been keeping those backups monthly. And so he came up with the laptop, and then I called IT. We got another laptop, and we were able to manually process most voters and figure out what ballot they should receive. So we were able to come up with a solution, but it was a very slow process. So the line still was moving quite slowly. Total Vote came back up approximately three hours after it was down, but the crash created quite a delay in people voting. So we had a line that did not really, anybody that's in line by 5:00, we have to let them vote on those days. So approximately 6:30, we were done processing voters, and then all of those ballots that were manually processed had to be re-entered into Total Vote. So we did that, and then also that was the Friday prior to the election. So we had to audit and file all of those ballots prior to Saturday morning so that we could get our registration list printed. Just one other side note. I think the people waiting in line were appreciative. I had about three cases of water in my car that we were going to use for our election workers, so I went and got those cases of water and brought them up so that the people waiting in line could at least have a bottle of water. November 2nd, so after, this is the Saturday prior to the election. After having a late night on Friday with my staff, we were back here on Saturday morning. And on the Saturday prior to the election is when we print all the registration lists. So we printed those for the 81 precincts. And then we also were preparing our route maps for our deliveries for Monday, organizing the supplies to be delivered for that Monday delivery, as far as counting out the things that needed to go in the vans and the trailers, and getting those loaded. So we ended up with approximately 12 different routes, anywhere from five to six precincts per route. We rented five vans and two trailers for this election. This is the first time that I suggested to the highway department that I go get the trailers myself from U-Haul so that we could have them loaded right away on Saturday. And then when they picked them up on Monday, the trailers were prepared, loaded, and ready for the highway department to leave with. I visited with Hank from the highway department, and he was extremely appreciative of the work that we did to get those trailers ready. Most of our staff was able to leave by noon on Saturday, so that was good. And then also on that Saturday, I allowed additional, some of our new superintendents to come in and go over questions that they had since they had not been a superintendent So on November 4th, which is the Monday prior to the election, this is when we did all of our supply delivery. So all the AM routes were ready to go, so our, our delivery drivers for the vans showed up. They were able to take off, the highway department left at approximately 8:00 in the morning, and they did the rural routes, and then our other delivery drivers came in and did our AM routes. And then they came back, and we loaded the vans for the PM routes. All of that went extremely well, and all of our precincts received the appropriate things that they were supposed to receive. Our in-person absentee voting was still being conducted on the 4th, and the line was very long that day as well, and I think our line that night cleared at approximately 6:00 PM. So we had another late night with finalizing those absentee ballots and getting those filed prepared for the next day. And the reason I am stressing these late nights also is because going into Election Day, which is what we're going to talk about next, most of, some of our staff is here at approximately 6:00 in the morning, and then the others come in between 7:00 and 8:00. But we had several late nights leading up to Election Day, so I'm just really proud of the staff for putting in all these hours. So on Election Day, as I said, some of us came at 6:00. The rest were here between 7:00 and 8:00. Our phones rang absolutely nonstop that day. Many of the calls were, we had a few calls regarding our express vote machines where they either couldn't get them going, so we had to send out somebody to assist them. We also, as the day went on, we had a lot of calls for our, for ballots, and I'll explain that later, about needing additional ballots. And then also the "I voted" stickers. Surprisingly, I thought, leading up to this day, I thought that would be not a funny thing, but a thing that would be ironic is that that's what people would complain about the most. And actually, we did have complaints about running out of "I voted" stickers. So next year or next time, we will order twice as many. On the ballot issue, so one of our ballot orders right before we were loading the ballot boxes was printed improperly, and so we had to, we got a replacement order for that ballot order, and then we also placed an additional ballot order because absentee voting was going so well. We were sending out so many ballots. Initially, I had planned for approximately a 90% turnout. I think we ended up ordering ballots for 100% turnout. We end up, since the ballot was so long and there were so many questions, we had a lot of people that needed to have an additional ballot because they might have messed up on their ballot. So I was noticing a trend, so we had to order more ballots. But the problem with having so many in-person absentee voters and not knowing what those numbers would look like at Election Day at the precinct, loading the ballot boxes was a little difficult. And then having that order that was not correct prevented us from loading more ballots into the ballot box as we sent them out to the precincts. So we knew we were going to have calls to get additional ballots, so we were managing that as well. The good news is that we had no major problems with ballots and that we never ran out of ballots, so that was a great thing. Before I go into some of these other items, I would just want to pause and see if you have any questions so far. Election workers. So we had a lot of changes, as I stated before, in our election workers. So the precinct boards, there's approximately 363 people that worked. Even the day before the election, we had calls where people were telling us they couldn't work, and so we were getting replacements for them. I think Mike was pretty much constantly on the phone taking those calls. Our absentee board, we began with 56 workers at approximately 9:00. The supervisors came in at 8:00 AM, and then we had an additional 20 to 25 that started coming in a little later at 7:00 PM when we realized that we were going to need another crew. As we headed into the early morning hours and we were still working on absentee ballots, we did have additional volunteers come in. And on our resolution board, we had, we started with two resolution teams, two people each, four workers, at 9:00, and then we had four additional new teams come in at 5:00 PM. And then also, even with resolution, we had to add more workers as the night went on. I was grateful for several people, but SD Canvassing and others that put out calls to try to get extra people to come in and help us out, and so that was a very big benefit. Going into some observations. I'm going to have, in this section, there's a lot of numbers I may end up throwing out here to you, so there's a lot of detail. But our absentee voting and our ballot processing for that takes for sure double the amount of time as it does for our regular Election Day voters. And I would say that's at a minimum because all of the Yuakava ballots take approximately triple the amount of work and time due to recreating the ballot. In looking back and doing some comparisons on those Yuakavas, one correction I should point out, a little farther down here on this slide, the 200 that I have in 2020, that was actually for District 15. The correction should be 611 in 2020. But Yuakava ballots, when they were processed in 2020, the codified law that I have listed here, 121910, where it says the board shall enter the voter's name on the election poll book and mark the registration list. In 2020, entering the name on the election poll book was not done. They had a registration list, but they did not write the names down. And so as I was doing some comparison in time and why these Yuakava ballots took so much longer for this election compared to the previous presidential election, that was the, one of the things that stood out to me was that writing those names down in that poll list takes a lot of time, and it wasn't done in 2020. So not only did we have more Yuakava ballots in this election, we also took more time processing those ballots properly, according to that codified law. In 2020, we had a total ballot count of 93,430 ballots. Of those, 41,542 were absentee ballots, and that's a total of absentee, that's in-person and mail-in ballots. In '24, we had slightly more ballots to count, 95,683, and less absentee ballots of 28,707. But like I mentioned, processing those ballots took longer this time due to following that codified law. We also have seen a consistent increase in Yuakava ballots over the years. I wrote down some numbers that in, I'll just list the general elections, but in 2020, we had 611 Yuakava ballots. In 2022 general election, we had 218. And in the '24 general election, we had 759 Yuakava ballots. Another difference comparing the 2020 general election, since that was a presidential, and the '24 general election, we had 12 items on the ballot in 2020, and we had 16 items on the ballot in '24. That difference, that makes a difference because when, when they're recreating those ballots, those Yuakava ballots, there's more items to mark. There's also more items that a person, as we're running them through the tabulator, there's more votes that can be improperly counted on the tabulators, so they end up going to resolution. So there's just more chance of a ballot going to resolution, the more items that are on the ballot. Some improvements. So I'll move on to that slide. So one of the biggest improvements that we can make, that I can make, is not just having more absentee board workers because our space is limited. I think the maximum we could easily have working up here is 60. We had 56 that started. But having a complete second shift, now that's not going to speed up the time, but it's going to bring in fresh workers. And so having a complete second shift that would come in and including supervisors would be an improvement. Not knowing how many absentee ballots you're going to end up with, it's a little bit of a guessing game. I know in the '22 election, I believe they had more workers come in, but then they had fewer absentee ballots, and so they sent a lot of the workers home. So balancing that is difficult, but I think we could do better there and bring in more absentee workers. Also, this was a suggestion, suggestion that we made to the absentee board, but it needs to be followed, and that would be to process the largest Yuakava precincts first while people are fresh and able to work on those. And so 416 and 516, those precincts have the greatest number of Yuakava ballots, and they have got to be processed in the very beginning instead of throughout the day. Another area that we could improve is to review and change our results reporting process. So I was told that historically, we have always, so typically, we would have run absentee ballots on one tabulator, and the other three would be Election Day tabulators. What we started with for this election, knowing that we had so many absentees, is I started with two tabulators for absentee ballots and two for Election Day. Our goal, of course, was to start processing those absentee ballots on the tabulators early in the day, but the time that it was taking the absentee board to work through those ballots made it not possible for us to start tabulating the ballots. So we started with the two tabulators, and normally, the process would be that we would not start reporting results until all the absentee results have been uploaded into the EM. EMS laptop. And then as the election day results get processed and those get uploaded, then the results would start getting uploaded to the state. The problem with that for this election was that the absentee ballots on one tabulator were not completed until the very end. So by 11:30 the day after the election, roughly most of the ballots were counted by the tabulators. However, we had one tabulator that still had absentee ballots to process. And those ballots were, the holdup was the 416 and the Yuakava ballots. So that tabulator had a great deal of absentee ballots on it, and so all of the tabulation results for election day ballots for those related precincts were not getting uploaded. The long delay, so the one that we stopped using for absentee and switched over to election day, those absentee ballots got uploaded, and then the related precincts, as election day ballots were processed, could also get uploaded to the state. And then the delay came waiting for that last tabulator to finish the absentee ballots. So that's why the public thought that nothing was happening because we were waiting on that machine to get uploaded. So what I would like to see is that we change that process and upload those results on the absentee tabulator throughout the day when there's a large number of absentee ballots. And I would like to work with IT for better solutions on that process. Another improvement that I've been talking with some folks about is having a better storage and preparation facility. As far as, there's some space on our, on the first floor of the Public Safety Building that's empty. I know there's been a delay in trying to figure out if that's a possibility to use that space. But if we could store our supplies and the items that we need for elections in a better location where we're not constantly moving the puzzle pieces around and be able to prepare the supplies that need to go out to the precincts, it would maybe cut back on some of the Saturday time and the overtime that we have to put in, in getting that prepared. If any of you have ever been here on the Monday prior to the election, we pretty much take over the hallway on first floor, and all of those supplies are sitting out there. And then we load those vans. Having access to the Public Safety Building on that first floor would also give us an opportunity to load the vans and the ballot boxes and all of that stuff in the Sallyport. And so we've looked at making some changes there. Also, just not having to pack things up and unpack them so often would, would be a benefit of that space. Some other small suggestions that came up during staff conversation, the ladder opener that we use to open all the absentee ballots, that needs to be sharpened and adjusted because we were having problems with that machine. And then also, just we are going to order better tools for opening all the Yuakava ballots. Yuakava ballots come in pretty much covered in tape, so they take clear tape and they completely surround the envelope with tape, and it's difficult to get those open. Also, I would like to create a backup team to relieve my staff on election day when we are tabulating. So typically, our staff in our office is the only ones that run the tabulators. And when they have to be here until counting has been completed, that meant for this election that they put in anywhere from 34, 32 to 36 hours straight time without a break because once we were done with the election, we still had to work the next day. And so it wasn't a possibility to close our office and let them go home and rest. So I would like to find a way to have additional people running those tabulators. Before I get into proposed legislative changes, I want to pause for questions if you have Okay. So I am working in conjunction with SD Canvassing and Rick Wyble. Rick is here today also to work on some specific bills that would help our county. They've, they're working on approximately 25 election-related bills, but the two that are important to me would be to look at our in-person absentee voting, like, so our absentee, the Yuakava process, and then also, which other one did I have listed here? I think that was it, just the absentee and the Yuakava. Oh, and then we have one that we're working on for recounts, trying to come up with a better process for recounts. And so some of the things that I would like to see would be a shorter in-person absentee voting timeframe. And the reason I state that is for a couple reasons. When people can come in and absentee vote in person up until the Monday prior to the election, and we're printing the registration list on the Saturday prior to the election, there is a window where we can't capture what happens on that Monday. So a person can show up to vote on Tuesday at a polling place that has come in and voted on Monday in person, and we do not catch that. And that could be a big problem. We did have one person that voted twice in this election, and that is in, it was sent to the Sheriff's Department, who's now referred that back to the State's Attorney's Office. I'm surprised that it was only one person. So I just think we need to tighten up those, that process and prevent that from happening in the future. Ending the in-person absentee voting on the Friday prior to the election would also allow for us to use our Monday to better prepare for Tuesday's election instead of having so much work to do on Monday and staying late on Monday night. Again, that is a legislative change. It's not something that you can necessarily help us with. And then also changes to the Yuakava process. If there's a way to be able to begin that process prior to the Tuesday, prior to election day, with either writing down those names in the poll list or coming up with a different process where we don't have to spend so much time on those Yuakava ballots. Another good thing with those ballots that we've worked on, hopefully in legislation, is potentially not recreating those ballots onto an optical scan ballot. Because what we found in the recount is that that was an area of error. So anytime we're taking someone's original ballot and we're recreating it onto an optical scan ballot, there's room for a mistake to happen. I think it would speed up the process, and it would be much quicker if we took those actual Yuakava ballots and had a team of people that hand-counted those ballots directly instead of recreating them and running them on the tabulator. I have asked Rick to come and tell us about those two bills if that is okay with you.
Sure.
Hey. Oh, I have, sorry, one thing I forgot. I did a little calculation yesterday on ballots processed per hour, and what I did was I reached out to Lincoln County and Pennington County, and I got some numbers and also found out when they were done processing their ballots. So Lincoln County had, I'm just looking at total ballots, not dividing it into absentees because that complicates the process. But they had a total ballot count of 37,039 ballots. They worked on processing those ballots for nine hours, which gave them 4,115 ballots processed per hour. Pennington County completed processing at approximately 6:00 a.m. They had 57,555 total ballots, and their ballot processing per hour is 5,232. We had 95,683 ballots, and I used an average ending time of 1:00 p.m. since most of our ballots were counted by 11:30, and the remaining absentees were 1:30. That's 18 hours, and that comes out to 5,316 ballots per hour. So technically, our county processed more ballots per hour than the other two largest counties in the state. So I actually was surprised. I thought that our number was going to be low. I was pleased that our number was high, and I think that that just goes to show that even though the public or you may have thought that we did not do a good job, I think we did an outstanding job, considering that this was my second election and my first presidential election. And both of those counties have very experienced auditors, and as you know, this was my first election year. So I'm going to turn this over to Rick, and then I'll be back for your questions and comments.
Thank you. My name is Rick Wyble, and I have a lot of different titles, but I am known as an election integrity expert. And I want to thank Leah Anderson and her wonderful staff for allowing us and SD Canvassing to actually help observe the election, be part of it, so that we could look at, how can we improve the elections in South Dakota? We had submitted well over 100 bills over the last few years to improve the election processes in South Dakota. In 2023, we had 35 of them go through committees and 14 of them signed into law. So we actually have a good track record. Some of the bills that Leah has talked about regarding Yuakava, because of the processing time that it takes to basically take something that is hermetically sealed in duct tape, clear tape, pull it out, and then try to transcribe that with a board of a team into another ballot style, takes more time than to actually just physically count it and leave it in its original form. And so we don't have to create additional election material and additional storage for that. The other thing that we're looking at as well is to have more communication with the parties by introducing legislation that asks the parties 60 days before each of the elections to submit a list of people for the absentee ballot boards, election judges, recount boards, post-election audits. So that way, the parties can actually have that bipartisan oversight and then using the existing law that's in statute, then have the 45-day timer where then the auditor, if they're not getting enough volunteers, can then pursue the advertisement and then using the voter registration list to make sure that party balance is maintained for each of those positions. But it's time to start asking the parties to step up in a bipartisan way as well. The other thing that we're looking at as well is that there's actually a law that every single county auditor violated this election and for the past few elections. We're looking to eliminate it. There is actually a statutory requirement that judges are actually on a separate ballot. Nobody prints a separate ballot for the judges, so we're looking to get rid of that. Another thing that we're looking at doing as well is to more standardize the ballots across the counties as well to make sure that they're more uniform. The other thing that we've looked at too is, we've identified in South Dakota, your neighboring county, Lincoln County, actually violated state statute with their test decks. And so one of the things that we're looking to do is actually make the statute more of a checklist and then upgrade some of the items that are in the administrative rules into statute so that it's a lot more clear, so that they can follow along. Because it's written as a run-on sentence that this is why so many of the auditors are missing it. So for example, this is where we helped Leah look at her one-to-max, and we identified that ESNS is unaware of making sure that you have overvotes accounted for. They're unaware of the undervotes that are needed. So if you just run the default set from ESNS, you'll automatically violate state statute. The other thing to raise the bar as well is looking at trying to make sure that one-to-max, especially when we had so many amendments and referendum, the, the default would have been every single one of those would have been yes, no's, 1-2, 1-2, 1-2, 1-2. What we recognized in Pennsylvania in the case that I helped in is that unfortunately, there's been programming errors that were documented in a judicial case there where votes for one judge was actually going down to another, and the test decks didn't cover it. And in ESNS's own statement, they request that you do have a more robust test, and so that's where we developed the prime number test and also making sure that the numbers are different. So like in the initiatives, we took the whole block and just said, okay, the first one is one, the next one is two, then the next yes is three, then four, five, six. So that way, we could identify if there were any programming issues. Thankfully, as we saw the order coming in when we were going through the testing, I had alerted the staff, make sure you look at the timing marks on the left-hand side of your original ballots and the new ballots. Staff was so receptive, they caught it. Had we not looked at that, we could have had an issue here in Minnehaha County where the wrong votes could have gone to the wrong location because the timing marks were mixed. So thankfully, because of the due diligence of the staff here, they caught that. The staff was so amazing to see the work that they were doing through the whole process and the mistakes and the errors that they caught, that they were able to keep this election at such a high standard. You guys are absolutely blessed. The staff here is amazing and completely bipartisan. We have so far 31 bills that are written that we have submitted. We've also included a new tally sheet for hand-counting. We've had enough tests through multiple states that that's working well, and I'm writing legislation currently in 12 states right now. There are some nice ideas out of Minnesota that we're looking at the legislature to consider because, for example, in Minnesota, they start their absentee processing 19 days before the election to go through and actually enter in the received absentee ballots to help with that data. And then before they print the voter rolls, they basically transfer that data over so when they print their backup copy, they actually have in each of the precincts a list of all the people who've already voted absentee. So that's, those are things that we're looking at, at some of the best of class across the country. So thank you. I'll be available for any questions that you may have.
Anything to summarize, Leah?
No, we can go on.
Okay, we'll take public comment now on, on the election briefing. Anybody want to address the commission on the election briefing? Good morning.
Good morning, county commissioners. And Commissioner Bender, thank you for your years of service. Really appreciate it. I'm Jill Franken, volunteer state president for AARP South Dakota. I also have two executive council members at the state level with, here with me this morning. AARP is nation's largest nonprofit organization dedicated to empowering people over 50 to choose how they live as they age. On behalf of our 100,000 members across the state of South Dakota, 21,000 of which live in Minnehaha County, thank you for the opportunity for this public input. So AARP members and older voters in general turn out overwhelmingly in every election. And since, in the 2022 statewide election, voters 50-plus made up 62% of the ballots cast. Since 2020, voters have increasingly voted by absentee ballot or in-person, early voting, with over half of all voters choosing to vote prior to election day in 2024. All Americans should be afforded the right to vote freely, easily, and safely, including casting absentee ballot and options for early voting. Election officials should ensure voting is easy and convenient and processes are seamless for requesting, returning, and verifying absentee ballots. Additionally, AARP believes that voting systems, processes, and registration procedures should be designed to encourage maximum participation. All voters should be encouraged to participate in the electoral process without any unnecessary barriers, and any changes to voting processes should ensure increased access, fairness, and simplicity, not added complexity. Specifically, AARP supports expansive voting options such as, excuse me, early absentee and in-person voting, and not shorten this timeframe, no-excuse absentee voting, accommodations for voters with disabilities and those in assisted living facilities, and increased language access for non-English speaking voters. We oppose restrictive voting changes, including limits to early voting periods, witness requirements for ballot, mail ballots, and attempts to limit voter assistance. We support improvements in the administration of election We support improvements in the administration of elections, including providing advanced training to poll workers to ensure nonpartisan election administration and encouraging maximum participation by expanding the range of voting times, locations, and options. Free and fair elections are essential to democracy, and older voters are a key group that participates at high levels every election. We at AARP South Dakota hope you'll take these concerns of our older voters in our state and in Manyaha County to heart when deliberating on any changes to the voting process in Manyaha County. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jill. I just want to remind everybody, please sign in if you are doing public comment. We do need it for the record. Thank you.
I'm a note taker, and I was so fascinated with the report that Leah gave that I couldn't go over what I'm going to say right now. So this is spontaneous.
Ma'am, we need your name.
My name is Jean Childs, and I live in Lincoln County. Thank you. I want to thank Leah Anderson, Mike Mathis, all the staff that helped, all the volunteers that helped, all the workers that helped, and anybody I've left out is also included. I was able to observe, I don't live in this county, or I would have been a worker in helping with all this, but I was able to observe for approximately four hours election night till 1:00 a.m. in the morning, approximately. And I learned so much about how hand-counting the ballots at precinct level would alleviate, eliminate, I don't know, all of our issues, or at least a tremendous percent of all our issues, and thank you for your time.
Good morning. Jessica Paloma, Manyaha County. I just want to thank Leah for that wonderful presentation. I know she was trying to have some time off and did this on her vacation time, so well done. I also got to participate as a backup worker in a lot of this absentee process and worked on it myself, had my hands in those absentee ballots. And what Leah said is true, it does take double or triple the time of a regular ballot. So if we want to cut down on the processing and the time that it takes to run the election, people should show up and vote up, in person. We, as South Dakota Camcens Group, are hoping to see limited absentee balloting with an excuse. As we saw in the 2020 election, absentee balloting is a, the method, the key method for fraudulent ballots being ejected into an election. We have solid evidence of that all across the country and particularly in Manyaha County. The CVRs show it. The Yocova ballots in particular, in Manyaha County, as was witnessed in the recount by several people, showed that they went nine to one for the Democrats. Yocova ballots are the only demographic of voters in South Dakota that vote 90% for Democrats, probably because they aren't real. We've seen that. I've got affidavits from election workers in Montana and other states that say the same thing. So that, excuse me, that loophole needs to be closed. The workers did a fantastic job. There was just a lot of absentee ballots, and the space, too, I think has been mentioned before, needs to be increased if there's going to be that much voting. On a good note, on a positive note, we saw, I think, 50% of people voted by absentee in 2020. In '24, that was less, and 75% of them voted in-person, only 20%, 25% by mail. In the primary, it was only 3,000 people statewide sent their ballot by mail. People are getting the message, and it also introduces a federal agency into that process, into our state-run elections. The key story of 2024 was the total vote system crashing. It crashed for three hours. The Secretary of State's office didn't send out a notice for two hours. And we've done extensive research on this. We've got multiple articles about it. But the key is, in Pennsylvania and Oregon, they adopted this system. Both those states rejected it. Pennsylvania canceled their $10 million contract with them. And the security reports, which they failed, said that the security concerns are related to the Microsoft Azure platform hosting the data in the cloud, which is what our system is hosted in the cloud.
I'm going to need you to summarize, please.
Yeah, and the last thing that the official notice from the Secretary of State Office on that issue was that it was a global outage. If you go to Microsoft, there is no global outage on that day reported. Thank you.
I'm Penny Baybridge. I live here in Manyaha County. I did work this year with the, with the election, and I was just wanting to give some hands-on, boots-on-the-ground experience of some of the things that Leah talked about. On November 7th, when we lost power, I was working that day. I was walking the line. Basically, what I was doing was going up and down the hallway, just encouraging people because the line was incredibly long. When people came in the door from the elevator, I would tell them, that's about 20 minutes. That's how fast we could process them through from that door all the way up to here. And that wasn't because I timed it, because people would time it. They might say it took 20 minutes here. One man told me, between the pillars, it was eight and a half minutes. But at least people kind of gave him encouragement. At the time we lost that power, we were dealing with probably like 1,000 people a day. The line went all the way from this hallway down to the end of the hallway around and back up to the elevator and even into, at one point, I was trying to move the line around, and it came in that little hallway where the bathrooms were, and people went over toward the male bathroom. And I told them to move out here, and I don't know how many people were in there down that. I said, how far into the men's bathroom are you? One guy said, we're at the third stall. It was just the humor. People were being good-natured about. A very negative experience. It was hot, a very hot hallway. The fact that Leah came up there so quickly without water, people so appreciated that. I tried to put a fan down there for them. But again, these are things we need to accommodate and look towards. Just want to let you know, my experience, that was a man who passed out probably around 6:00 p.m. He was like third in line. He'd been there since, for like five hours. They called EMTs. The man, immediately, there were people, you know, first responders taking care of him. And Leah had a wheelchair that she kept on, for us to be able to use if we needed it. And so I pulled the wheelchair up. The man sat in the wheelchair, and they wanted to take him out in the hallway because the EMTs were coming, and he refused. He got a hold of that wheel, and he just started pushing himself right up there to the end of the, you know, to get in. He was now like second and third. He got up in line, he went and voted, you know, pulled his wheelchair. I made a space for him because I knew the EMTs were coming at the far end because then they'd have room to work. But that man was sitting there, you know, voting when the EMTs showed up. He refused to walk away, and I wasn't sure if that was legal, that they were there looking over his shoulder while he was voting, but it was an odd situation I didn't know how to handle. But it just, to me, defined the determination of public to vote. That man wasn't going to quit. I also wanted to mention that, I'm sorry, I'm out there, is that the thing I was going to say, but I'll hopefully have a chance to speak later about other things. But everything Leah was talking about, I experienced. If you have any questions, by all means, you can get ahold of me. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Betty Oldenkamp. I am here on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Sioux Falls, and I do, before I make comment, just want to add to the gratitude for Commissioner Bender for her years of service to the citizens of Manyaha County. The League of Women Voters is an organization that actually got its start from the women's suffrages. We have been an official organization since 1920, both nationally and here in South Dakota. The League of Women Voters really came about as a way to support women as they obtain the right to vote and help them to exercise that right to vote. Over the years, that has expanded into really working to empower all voters to exercise their right and to protect and further our democracy. So for the League of Women Voters, we seek to expand access to voting, to see more people voting at each and every election. And so we would resist efforts to restrict the access to vote. I think for the purposes of this past election, I have been an election worker in the past this year. I had the opportunity to do some observation of the absentee ballot process, and I, you know, you've heard many positive comments about that. What I would offer in addition to that is there are many resources of, available for recruiting volunteers, and the League of Women Voters is one of those that we could assist in that process of recruiting volunteers to assist in the processes up to and through Election Day. The other thing that I would add, that at this point and for the last several years, I have been an independent. I have also, in my time, been a registered Democrat and a registered Republican. I think depending only on the parties in South Dakota to staff election rolls leaves out a large percentage of South Dakotans. So I would just add that. Appreciate your time and your effort to make sure we have secure and accurate election results. And thank you to Leah as the auditor.
Jennifer Foss, Precinct 316 Committee Woman, current Manyaha County Republican Party Vice Chair and voter. And I also worked as a superintendent in my precinct this year. I was a first-time superintendent in the primary, which I had 32 voters come through all day with my two children and one Democrat in 5-2. And it was a long day for those kids, but at this time, I recruited my husband and I recruited my daughter to work at Memorial Middle School. And quite a difference, I think we had 1,608. I think we had over like 2,800 come through our Memorial Middle School. That's where I vote. That's where my kids went to school, so I'm familiar with the building and such. But it was interesting kind of being in the front lines of a very different situation. And I just want to say, it went really smoothly. I mean, there's certainly some concerns with the building. I mean, I talked to the staff there, you know, they have children there that day, so they have concerns. We had one door, I know Commissioner Karski, you vote there, but there's one way in and one way out, and there were long lines all day. I just wanted to say that I thought the report was very good. I welcome anything that we can do for efficiency. I'll probably do it again as a superintendent, and I just wanted to say it went well. And I hope that we can be open to improvements. Thank you.
All right. Commission, any questions, comments? We have no action on this agenda item. Commissioner Blumberg.
Thank you. I would just like to make a comment to say thank you to the auditor and to the staff and all the volunteers that were involved. It's such a large process, and the work that everyone put in is greatly appreciated. And I was curious, just with a question for the auditor and thinking of methods for recruiting, it sounded like a common theme was that we could use more staff. Do you have methods to maybe improve our volunteer staff or our seasonal staff going forward?
Communication is the best key. I know I went out to several groups and spoke prior to the election, letting people know that if they were interested in helping in some way, we have a form on our website that they can fill out, which gives us the information that we need in order to contact them or place them in the appropriate position. But yeah, word of mouth and communication is the best method. And, you know, just getting out and sharing our needs, that's what we rely on. I am actually meeting again with, there's a company called TextMyGov that's reached out to our county several times to implement their texting feature, but along the way, I've felt like it's rather expensive to use their service, but it would give us some communication ability beyond what we have internally, to be able to reach people that we normally wouldn't reach and send out text messages. But again, it's a costly endeavor, and it's not something that our budget, we typically don't budget for things like that at the county level. That's more of a city-type thing where they do these apps and are able to communicate with the people in the community.
And if I could, just one follow-up. Is there any, after someone applies or submits their name, is there any screening process? And the reason I ask is my son has volunteered in the past, and I have requested to be a volunteer in the past, and neither of us have been communicated with in the last couple of years. So I didn't know if there's maybe with transition in your office, if the list restarts, or if we're losing contacts, you know, that's your factor.
This is Mike.
Yeah, Mike Mathis, election coordinator. Yeah, we, I did the updating of the staff. We have about 930. So we have plenty of people that want to work out there. And like in your district, it was full, like, you know, we have people, you know. We rely on experience a lot of the time, and yeah, by no means do I cherry pick. I just kind of went with who I saw was experienced or, you know, where we needed help and went that route, so.
So we have plenty of help?
We do. In all honesty.
We have volunteers to poll from.
Yeah.
We do have a good list of volunteers to poll from. It's the maneuvering of the people. So you might have a precinct superintendent that, what we found in this last election is when we start placing new people in a precinct, the superintendents get a little bit upset with us sometimes. They don't like us to mess with their people that they've normally worked with. And what I was trying to explain to them with having, going from the 2020 election to the 2024 election, we've, we've added 10 precincts over those four years. And so we do need to place new people in with existing teams so that they can get experience, so that then we can move them into, say, a superintendent position on their own. As far as the number of people that send us those forms, we have a good pool to poll from. But again, for like, for instance, our absentee board, we're limited to how many people we can physically place up here at tables to work. So that's where we run into a few problems. Also, when we get cancellations last minute, then we're just going down the list and pulling the next available person. So as far as screening, we don't really, I mean, there isn't any way we can screen people. We explain to them what the, what the necessary job duties are, and then hopefully they can make that decision if they feel like they can handle those duties.
So my, my two follow-ups then would be, we weren't screened out, so I'll let him know that. But also, maybe in the future, we could do a better job of reaching out to that long list that we do have to be able to supplement that second shift option that you talked about, or with the, you know, transporting "I voted" stickers, things like that. Maybe we could alleviate some of the pressure on your staff if we use those resources.
Correct, yes, that's a great idea.
Commissioner Bender.
Well, I would just say that the, I think the thing that your presentation did really well is highlight how much work goes into an election, you know, how, what a long process it is, how many people are involved. And I would like to just echo Commissioner Blumberg and thank you and your staff, all the volunteers, IT, highway, you know, there are a lot of people that it takes to run an election like this, and I thought your presentation did a really good job. You know, you did a nice job of highlighting some real successes that you had. It sounded like, you know, during total vote, that that was really handled. It sounded like, you know, during total vote, that that was really handled as well as it could have been, and I applaud you and your staff for that. You know, the fact that you went out to the care centers, I thought was fantastic, and I really appreciated the work that went into that as well. I just, I was making some notes, all the attention you did to training, I think, was fantastic. So there is a lot to celebrate, I think, here with the election. And so I think one of the, and you did try to go through some of the, you know, process improvements or things that you were suggesting. So it sounds like one of the things that you're suggesting would be to do the tabulators or run the absentee ballots first, or at least get those organized. One thing, could you clarify for, I think a lot of people were, you know, you get used to your lingo and you don't know, and then people listening might not understand what Yuakava is, and we talked about it a lot today. Can you explain what those votes are for folks that might not understand that?
I sure can. So Yuakava ballots are typically those people residing overseas and military. So they turn in their absentee application, and then they will typically list their email address. So we email the ballot to them, but we don't, this is state law, the state doesn't accept the ballot back via email. They have to mail the ballot back. And so what they do is they print their ballot just on a normal eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheet of paper, multiple sheets of paper, and they fold those up, which creates an envelope that they send it back to us. And so it's not an official ballot. It's an official ballot by the means that it counts as an official ballot, but it's not printed on an optical scan ballot form. So when that ballot comes back to us, and we can't open those until Election Day, those ballots are recreated. The resolution board looks at their original ballot and then marks an optical scan ballot the way they voted on their original ballot. So that's the difference in the Yuakava ballots, when we refer to those. Those are, it's uniformed and American overseas citizens. That's the, each of those letters stands for that explanation, but that's just off the top of my head, that's what those ballots are.
Yeah, and that's a federal law, correct?
It's federal that we have to offer communication by electronic means. So part of that is federal and part of it's state law. Some of the, some states will allow their Yuakava voters, their overseas voters and military voters, to actually vote electronically, but we don't in our state. Our state sends them the electronic ballot via email. They access it, they have to print it and return it to us physically in the mail.
Okay. So, I mean, I would certainly think that overseas military people have the right to vote. Are there any questions about whether this group has the right to vote?
Oh, no. No. The Yuakava, Yuakava is not just military, it's overseas and military. They have every right to vote, they're registered voters, they have every right to vote. So that's not the question at all. The complication is the amount of time that it takes once those ballots come to us, and then we have to go through all those steps of recreating those ballots and running them through.
Okay. I think there was some public comment that maybe raised some question about that, I just wanted to clarify that. So I was wondering, as you were thinking through the process changes and stuff, did you, I mean, do you think we have enough tabulators? Did you feel like you had access to enough equipment to get the votes through?
Yeah, having another tabulator on election night for this election would not have sped up the process. The process was delayed because of the quantity of absentee ballots that we had to process, not having more equipment. In fact, in this room where we do the election night or the election day process, I don't think we could fit another tabulator in the room with two more operators. I mean, that, having another tabulator is not going to change that process. There's a county that had the same number, the county in Wisconsin that had the same number of absentee ballots that we did, and they have 13 tabulators. So I don't, I don't see that having more tabulator, if we had more tabulators, we would need more space. We would still need more workers. So really, for us here, it boils down to what we have to work with space-wise. So I'm not in favor of another tabulator. I think that's a very high cost, and it wouldn't provide a very good solution.
If I may.
Please.
So one of the things that you stated was that you had suggested that the Yuakava votes and the absentee ballots, that the ones with the precincts with high Yuakava votes be counted first, and that's what you're suggesting we do the next time. But you made it sound like you suggested that happen this time, but that didn't happen? And I'm wondering if, so next time you'll just mandate it, and this time you suggested it?
Well, I can't, so when I appoint an absentee board, I am not in charge of them. I can make suggestions, I can train them, but that board, they make their decisions. The board and the supervisors of that board make the decisions. I can't go in and tell them you have to do the, you know. So my suggestion to the absentee board supervisors was to start with the two precincts that we have the majority of the absentees for, the Yuakavas for, which was 416 and 516. I'm not sure why they, so they were, there were teams working on those ballots all day long. I'm not sure why they waited till the very end to complete that process, but yeah, Jessica did actually work on that particular precinct. So anyway, the fact that the majority of the Yuakava ballots were in that precinct also delayed the time, but.
I'll just, I'll answer your question for you. So the reason why that was last is because the absentee board workers that were there did not want to process that precinct because they feel it was full of fraud, fraudulent ballots. Because we've revealed the massive perjured voter registration forms, that they are lying on their voter registration, claiming to live on the second floor of Athan Railroad when they don't. So it was left to last, and we came in 8:00 in the morning and finished the job no one else wanted to do.
And that's correct.
I would question whether there's a conflict of interest to have the person in charge of counting the absentee ballots overseeing that process? That was the same person who had sued the county about that, but that was not an issue that came up today, that just seems surprising to me. So I would have one, I guess, one final question, if I may. I'm curious whether you feel like the process was always open and fully visible to the public during the whole voting process?
I do. I mean, we have, we had media in this area, in the rooms back here. I don't know how it would not be open and visible.
Well, my understanding that there was a time period where there were people working on absentee ballots in this room while the both doors were locked, shut and locked. Did that happen?
Those doors, one, those doors do shut very easily. If somebody touches them, they do shut.
Okay.
And there was also a time.
I'm talking to Leah right now, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
But I can answer your question.
Leah can also answer the question, thank you.
There was a short amount of time where I had to be in this room, and in the other room, there were media that were going in, and the media were not necessarily supposed to go into the room and take photos or look at the ballots that were being processed. So there was a time where I shut a door at the end of the room so that they would not go in there, because I had asked them to not go in there. So then we ended up having an employee, a staff member, go in and sit with, in that room, since I couldn't be in both rooms.
So the media can't be present while we're doing this?
The media can be present, but when they're taking, they're not allowed to take photos of ballots. And when I can't oversee or watch what's happening in there, then I have to suggest that they not go in there. And we had some of our media literally taking cameras and holding them over the table, taking ballots. This has happened at the post-election audit, this has also happened during absentee. So if I can't go in there and suggest that they remove themselves or not take photos of the ballots, then that was my initial reaction, was to shut the door so that they couldn't go in there, because I had to come into this room and take care of some things, so.
Is that a process you would recommend doing again?
No, I wouldn't. I definitely was advised by the State's Attorney's Office to leave the doors open, and I did. And then I also asked one of my employees to go in and sit in that room.
Do you have any idea how long the doors were locked?
It was maybe 10 minutes. It was not very long at all.
Would it surprise you that it was almost two hours?
They were not locked for two hours. I know they weren't.
I had an opportunity to look at the video, and that's how long it looked to me like they were locked.
The doors were not even shut for two hours.
Well, we could go back and double-check that, but I'm glad you think that that's not a process you would repeat in the future, because that was troubling.
No, it's not. I was upset with the media, I walked out of that room, came into this room, and I shut that door. The door at the other end may have been shut because no one was down at that end of the room.
But it surprised you that you shut both doors? You walked in and shut both doors?
No, the other door was already shut.
That's not what the video shows. So, okay, I'm done, thank you.
Further questions?
Mr. Chair, Gerald, do you want to go here? I guess I can just take us high-level. So as we go into Election Day, and I appreciate the report, I think it's just a little bit light on Election Day, or days, plural, as we counted into two days. So I'm just trying to get into a little bit of the mindset of you and your team on, say, the morning of Election Day. What was, what was just the expectation for how long it should take to count these ballots? At that time, you kind of can assume, you know you have in hand nearly 30,000 absentees and 28,000, and you're expecting 50,000 to 60,000 Election Day votes. What's a reasonable amount of time, or what did you plan for that morning? What was the outlook?
My outlook would be that I knew we would be here probably until the early morning of the next day. I know in the 24, or the 22 general election, that they ended counting at approximately 4:00 AM. So I knew that we would be going to that point at least, if not beyond.
And then philosophically, I'm sure we can agree that accuracy is the most important, but just to get a sense from your philosophy of the vote counting and the process, is speed important? Is getting timely results back to the public a priority?
It's important. It wouldn't be my top priority. My top priority would make sure that the process is done properly and that the results are accurate.
Yes, again, granted that accuracy is our number-one priority. Is there any, is it problematic in any view, or could you imagine a group of citizens being troubled by getting results 3:00 PM the next day, the Wednesday, and wondering what's going on during this time? Does that lend itself to wondering what's going on at Minnehaha County?
It does. And it also, that brings us back into the discussion with our IT department. Multiple times during the night, myself and Mike Mathis asked our IT guys that were sitting over here if we could transmit results to the state. I did not understand until approximately 1:30 the next day, when we got done processing the absentee tabulator, when Jason stated to Dakota Scout that the reason for the holdup was because they were waiting for that machine to back up. So that's why none of the results were getting processed or transmitted to the state, was because they were waiting for that machine. In the meantime, they could have been having us transfer and process partial results. We do have the ability to do that, to transfer partial results to the state. And then also, after that point, I asked, when we ran the provisional ballots, so does the EMS laptop know when we upload the results from the tabulator to the EMS laptop? Does it know which ballots we have already counted? And the answer was yes, it does. And so that did clue me in on, why weren't we processing these results sooner? Because the EMS laptop would have known when we added those absentee ballots, and if more came through and added more, it would know which ones were new. So that's where we, our department and IT, need to work on a new solution and not wait until that last absentee tabulator is complete.
So I would just respond, I don't find that credible, that, and I'm not going to allow you to throw our IT team under the bus here either, I don't find it credible that it'd be 1:30 on Wednesday after Election Day, after high-profile media interactions, and you don't understand what is partially reporting or not. So I just don't find that credible. But let's dive in a little bit deeper onto Election Day itself. We said we had two tabulators dedicated towards absentee ballots. Do you recall when we actually started running through the ballots through those two tabulators?
I don't recall the exact time that we started running those ballots through, but we were prepared, and I had staff available, to run the ballots through as soon as they came in from the absentee board. So we probably began running those absentee ballots through at, it would have probably been somewhere in the 3:00. I mean, we, the precincts, as they're processed in absentee, start trickling in, but that takes time. So if we got a precinct that was done in absentee, in the absentee board, we would have tabulated those on the absentee tabulator. So it would have been somewhere in the neighborhood of 3:00 in the afternoon.
Would it surprise you if I had a source telling me that it was at around 4:30 PM? Does that sound about right?
It doesn't surprise me. I know they were trying to get, I mean, things had to go through resolution.
Just working backwards, do you recall when the tabulator went through its public test of the machines? We do a public test on Election Day?
Correct. We started doing our public tests, so it's not a public test, it's a test prior to tabulating. We started doing that test earlier in the day, so.
So I have notes that say that that was started at 2:00 PM. So if we take that at face value, though, we had, basically what I'm getting at is we had staff coming in, you know, a normal workday, call it 8:00 or 9:00 AM, getting some training, and we're not in parallel doing the test of the machines to get the machines ready. And so we have two machines dedicated to this task of absentee ballots, but we don't even, the first ballot doesn't even touch either machine until 4:30 in the afternoon. So we're setting ourselves back, and we know full well that at 7:00 PM, the polls close, and we're going to get inundated with a wave of ballots. Basically, my conclusion is the absentee process needs to be more of a single-piece flow, like an assembly line in a factory. Some industrial engineering principles here need to be, rather than batching and just getting huge stacks and waiting until 4:30 in the afternoon, and then starting to use those machines. Is that a valid perspective?
Your perspective is not valid. The testing did not delay running the absentee ballots through. The testing was complete, and we were still waiting for absentee ballots to run through. So that did not delay the process. Also, the staff was getting inundated down on our first floor with calls and people coming in with questions. So the staff that I could bring upstairs to do the test was brought upstairs, we did our testing, and we were done with our testing. The delay in getting the absentee ballots run through the tabulators was not due to not having staff or not having the tabulators ready. It was due to the ballots going through the absentee process. It was due to the ballots going through the absentee process and coming to us ready after they went through resolution. So there, that was the delay. As soon as those ballots were in here and ready to be tabulated, we tabulated them.
Okay, I don't know that I trust your credibility on that comment, but I'll move on to just one other item is, uh, in the next step in that kind of assembly line, the factory movement here would be the tabulators themselves and what they kick out for a resolution board to look at. Can you describe the settings that you put on the tabulators for what they would kind of outstack and then we would have to manually look at with a resolution board?
Yes. So we have the tabulators outstack blank ballots. They outstack any unclear marks, and they outstack overvotes.
Okay, so.
And a missing stamp.
So it was your affirmative decision to outstack all overvotes?
Yes. I, we have done that since I started in the primary, in the school election or the city school election. We have outstacked overvotes. Would you like to know why?
Not really, actually. I don't, I don't.
Okay, because I've never seen you come up here and witness anything that we do. So I just thought maybe I could explain that to you.
Mainly because I don't, I question your judgment on pretty much every decision you make, and I think you've set up a process that is manifestly, uh.
Order.
Why, the, the audience, let's get some order here. I'm just making a judgment.
You're one comment away from leaving.
Can I not pass judgment on what I think a process was laid out to be? I think this was very inefficient and that we need better flow through. We, we, we pay, so we're the power of the purse. We pay for four tabulators, and you're not using them. And when you do use them, you're, you're outstacking everything in such a sensitive way that then a resolution board has to hand count a whole bunch of extra work anyway. So I just think it's not an efficient use of, uh, your resources. I think delivering results 3:00 p.m. the Wednesday, uh, you're going to have an audience in peer that I think they would have appreciated this opportunity to clarify some of those things. You're going to go out to peer and ask for legislative changes, but you didn't really fess up with, hey, we had an inefficient process, and here's a process map of how a ballot gets through this assembly line. And you had multiple, basically from a lean Six Sigma management style, you had all this waste in the process and stuff is just sitting, and you got staff twiddling their thumbs. My conclusion is the staff did their job. They need better leadership, and so we'll have to address that in 2026. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
It's not an assembly line, um, Commissioner Kipley. And we did not have staff twiddling their thumbs. Everyone was busy all the time. We were utilizing all four tabulators. We were trying to utilize two tabulators for absentee, knowing that we had a lot of absentee ballots. The absentee board was not keeping up and was not keeping our two tabulators busy processing ballots. So we decided at, after 7:00 p.m., when our mass amount of ballots were coming in, to turn that tabulator back over to Election Day so that we could process those ballots and get Election Day ballots done. We were done processing Election Day ballots by about 11:30 on the day after, which, as I demonstrated in my numbers, we processed a lot more ballots per hour than any other county did. So the ballots were processed timely. I took the advice of, I wasn't throwing IT under the bus. I take the advice of our IT department because they have a lot more years of experience in this. And they explained to me how they have historically done this process and how they have uploaded these results. And I went with their recommendations because they have more experience. I will not, I, I have the floor right now, sir. In the future, I will question them maybe a little more about this process. We do not have to wait until all the absentee ballots are tabulated in order to start uploading results. I found that out after the fact. So I will be working with them to make changes. And, um, I guess I, I disagree with your remarks, and I would love, and I have invited you many times to come and witness what we do and to participate in what we do along with all the commissioners. I would love for you to come. The only one I've ever seen up here is Commissioner Blindberg and Commissioner Karski when he's been here for a recount.
So, Mr. Chair, just to respond, apparently, uh, our chief election officer, it's with, it's just IT's fault. It's the absentee board's fault. It's us, our fault for not witnessing what goes on. It's everybody else's fault. And I just think that's a complete failure of leadership when you and your group, the canvassing group, basically run on a platform of we're going to fix the elections, and this was your Super Bowl. This was, this was the election. And it just, you know, we've got legislators chiming in on social media on Wednesday after the election. When are we going to get our results? This is a disaster. This is embarrassing Minnehaha County because Minnehaha County holds itself to a higher standard. We are the biggest, most efficient, most effective, most professional staff county in the state. We don't look to Pennington County or Lincoln County and compare rates. We should be able to do this faster, and we should have efficient results that get back to the public, and they should have leadership that they can trust and have credibility and aren't affirmatively shutting two doors. If I shut these two doors right now, I'd be violating open meeting laws, and I'd probably get accused by your fan club of treason or something. So, I mean, that's the type of credibility that we're dealing with here. So I think that's all I have for now, but I just think we could have had a lot more information about a tick tock of the day of election or into Wednesday with what was going on, kind of a process map of how we're going to do this better in the future. But I think I'm quite clear on the record that I don't have any faith in your leadership of the office. That's all, Mr. Chair. I'll quit. Thanks.
Commissioner Benega.
Well, I'll just try to maybe summarize in my own mind, which is maybe trying to make it a little too simple. But I see that we did have wonderful staff. We did have wonderful operational challenges that we dealt with and frankly, not a lot of experience in some cases. But the bottom line was that we don't have enough shift workers. We don't have shifts in some cases. I don't think we have enough tabulators. I also think we have a storage issue. I will also think we have some inefficiencies, if you will, on how we use some of the volunteers. But the other thing that kind of bothers me a little bit is it appears that we take the Republican Party and the Democratic Party and look for volunteers, and we have a whole another group of independents. It's probably now 40% of the population or some number that, um, have not been asked. But the other thing is we have 600-plus people on the list that didn't come this time, and I would like to know kind of why they didn't come. Some way to, to survey them to say, can, what can we do to encourage you to be part of that? Reach out to other groups that would be supportive of letting us be part of a more efficient, speedier, um, process that we can get results quicker. The other thing that I think we need to know more about, uh, we've heard that there's a possibility of 31 bills bring, brought to the legislature in the next couple of weeks or whatever. Frankly, that's part of the solution because the legislature is this problem solver. We aren't the problem solver. So I don't know what those 31 bills even say. And I think that's a problem. You haven't communicated to us what your thought process is for being frankly, supporting the results that we're looking for, which is expansion and making it easier for voters, making the results quicker. And the legislature is going to have to support us in those opportunities, if you will. But at this point, we don't even know what your suggestions are. I think that needs to be corrected somehow so that we have some idea on what we can do to help the legislature. Because you've told us multiple times that you're responsible for the operational issues, and we don't have a lot of input into that conversation. But I think we want to be part of the solution, and part of the solution is to communicate with us how we can be more effective, how we can broaden the base, uh, make it simpler rather than more complicated. And right now, I don't have those solutions. At least I don't think I have the solutions because of the legislature is the one that's going to make the changes.
Mr. Chair, um, Commissioner Benega, it's not, okay, with the legislation, um, it's not the job of me or any other auditor to write legislation. Like, we work with people that write legislation or make legislative suggestions, and I answer and communicate with the legislators, um, the ones that have reached out to me or I've reached out to them with suggestions. Uh, the only two of those 31 bills, those are not bills that I'm bringing forth. I, in fact, I may even have differences of opinion on those 31 bills, even though I communicate with SD canvassing and Requival. Um, we may not always agree on all of those proposed changes. They're the ones presenting the bills, not me. Um, the ones that I'm really pushing for changes on would be some of that in-person voting absentee process, um, the process with our recounts. There's certain ones that I, um, really want to get some solutions for, uh, residency issues, a lot of that. So I'm trying to work with and communicate with those legislators and just share with them my experience, my, um, knowledge that I've gained so far, and that's my goal. I have a job to do here, so I can't completely focus on legislative changes. Um, your question about the independents, uh, we do have a great number of independents and NPAs and other party affiliations that assist with the worker process. We, we don't, so the two parties, the Democrat Party and the Republican Party legislatively, they have a deadline to submit names to us. They have not done that. We try to work with those parties. Those parties are easier to communicate with because they have party chairs. They have county chairs. So I do have a way to communicate with them better. There isn't a official independent party or an official NPA person to communicate with, so that makes it difficult. So that's why when I go out to speak with different organizations, I try to communicate our needs. There's no one that, you know, has contacted me. Some of, some of the groups that I have gone out to, like the Sertoma Club or different organizations, they actually produced a lot of our independent and NPA, uh, workers for us. So we do try to reach out to all the parties. We don't focus just on Republican and Democrat. That's also why a lot of the people that have submitted, um, requests to be a volunteer or a worker, if we have too many Republicans, we can't utilize them all. Uh, we do need to have party balance. And so that, again, is why some of those, let's say, 600 people that have turned in a form may not be reached out to because we've already got, you know, three or four Republicans as precinct workers, and we need other parties to step up and be in that process. I think that kind of answers most of your questions. Um, I want to jump back, though, to something that happened in the 2022 general election. If you recall, um, in, during that process I talked about where we have to proof the ballots, you might recall that your auditor at the time didn't, must not have proofed the ballot well, and he missed an entire race on the ballot, which caused the county to have a special election after the general election. Um, one thing that that did for the people that voted in the 2022 general election is, in my opinion, it disenfranchised them in voting for the person, the people that were running for that conservation district. And I don't recall any form of grilling or, um, making that auditor come up here and explain what happened, um, in that process. And I do also recall that, you know, you guys paid him a lot more because of his experience. And I am completely satisfied with where I'm at, knowing that you think I have less experience. That's fine. Um, but like I said, this was my first presidential election, my second election, and honestly, I think I did an outstanding job in this election. We had no major errors. Everything was counted properly, and I can tell you that if you walk over where we store our election records now, you will see a very organized system. And in talking with my staff, um, I don't have anybody that has come to me and said that I did not do a good job. So, um, I guess I will leave it at that unless there's more comments.
My comment, just to finish this conversation from my perspective is, if you want our help, you're going to have to communicate better to us on what you think the problems are, which you've told us in written form and in writing or in verbal conversations. But we still need to have input. We can't act as a board of directors, so to speak, and not have information about who's going to help us with those problems. You're kind of telling me that we really don't want you to be involved until it goes to the legislature and we can read it in the paper. That's not the way we should be operating.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying I don't want you to be involved. But I'm saying that as an auditor and as our, we have the South Dakota Association of County Officials, and typically they send messages to us as auditors about which bills to support or not to support. Um, I don't usually run with that. Like, if they tell me this is where we want you to stand on this bill, well, I'm going to use my own mind, and I'm going to make my own decisions as to what might be best for this county. I can communicate those concerns with you, but a lot of that process happens really fast. So like I said, I'm not writing the bills. I'm supplying information, trying to make decisions that would be best for this county in particular. And other than, I guess I don't see that the commission board has the opportunity to make the changes that I feel would be best for our county. You could read the legislation, support those changes. I'll try to get copies of some of those bills to you. Um, I don't even have copies of those at this time.
Well, evidently, you don't know about the number of people that we get contacted with questions as much as you think we do or don't. Ironically, I think in the next two weeks, we all have meetings with legislators, the whole group at one time. And we will have plenty of opportunities for us to contact them and do what we just talked about. So to have, not have our input with what we think your needs are and what the county's needs are, I think is totally inappropriate. And it's not just your list. That is not literally giving us solutions to the 31 things that you're talking about. So.
Again, I'm not, I am not talking about 31 bills.
Whether you have 31 or 29 or 23 or whatever your county association or whatever, what we need to know is this, what the priorities are to solve the problems that you already identified. And if we don't have that information with some sort of knowledge of what could help, we can't do our jobs as county commissioners.
Okay.
And that's the bottom line. I don't really care what happened in 2020 and 2024 and who's getting paid and how many ballots you couldn't find and then you could find. That's not important anymore. What's important is to make sure that we get these, this problem solved and we can find more people that want to vote and think it's an opportunity for them to express themselves simpler than what we have as a problem currently. I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I am going to wrap this up. Most of my comments have, or questions have already been taken, but I'm going to do two things. One is defend the prior auditor, um, on the election that was missed because it wasn't his fault that, and we were fully briefed on it publicly and, and by phone calls from the auditor that the conservation district forgot the four. the conservation district forgot to forward the names. It wasn't the auditor's fault, it wasn't any lack of diligence on their part, it was a mistake that was made at another level, and we were fully informed on that process the whole time. Your comments about the South Dakota Association of County Officials, I was going to bring that up anyway, Sodaco, because we are members, but your comments disappoint me because we rely on that organization. I've had to testify before legislative committees on numerous occasions, and virtually every time, the questions are, has your, have you vetted this through your association? How do the other counties feel about what you're doing? And we have to stand together as, as counties, both as county officials and county commissioners, because our unified voice before the legislature makes a big difference. Otherwise, we've got 100 legislators out there that say, well, that's a Minnehaha County problem. And if we don't speak, if we don't get our association behind us, and if we don't stand with our association on other issues, we are going to fall short in what we need to be, get done for the benefit of the voting public. So if we do have legislation, I hope that it's vetted or at least sent through the association we belong to for their support. Otherwise, we're an island, and we don't, we won't get anything done. So that would be my only advice. I do agree wholeheartedly that the thought of another additional tabulator should be looked at. It does seem like an easy solution. I would like to hear more about that going forward. Fortunately, we don't have an election for another two years. So those are my only comments, suggestions. I have no questions. If you want to reply to anything I said, I welcome it.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to wrap up this briefing and move on to a next agenda item. Consider a motion to authorize a chair to sign a resolution establishing new fees for highway access permits. Our acting interim highway superintendent, Jacob Mars.
Morning Commissioners, Jacob Mars, Highway Department. The new fees that we propose in front of you, we're not trying to make money on our permit process, we're just trying to cover our time that we spend on our permits. We try to update our permit costs every two to four years to keep up with inflation.
All right, public comment on this agenda item. Commission questions. Action.
Would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Consider a motion to adopt a resolution to update accommodation of utilities on county highways right-of-way and fee structure. Again, Jacob.
Yes, same. Another utility permit that we are updating. In addition to this, there is an accommodation of utilities on county right-of-way, which is a document that we, we use to guide the installation of utilities within the right-of-way that we are responsible to maintain. And it's, it's mostly a couple grammatical errors updated in it, and then the costs are updated in it as well.
Public comment. Commission action.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion, a second. Additional comments? Call the roll.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Consider bid results and award recommendation for Project MC 1710 Highway 149 Cold-in-Place Recycle and authorize chair to sign an agreement with By2Minus Paving Incorporated. Bids are open on December 11th. Jacob.
Yes, so this is year number three of the road south of Colton. This will be the final year of construction. We are going to redo the surfacing on this road. On the 11th of December, we opened bids and received seven bids, ranging from 2.9 million to 2.2 million. Our engineer's estimate was 3.5 million, so bids, bids came in very well. This is the first Cold-in-Place Recycling that we're going to be doing in Minnehaha County. It is grinding up a portion of the existing road, adding new oil into it, recompacting the road, and then putting a new lift of asphalt on top. That, that gives us savings in the, the surfacing of the road. We utilize the existing section of the road for strength instead of going out, tearing apart the whole road, redoing the, the dirt work. So there's, there's quite a bit of cost savings here doing it this way versus a traditional full reconstruction project. Our request would be to award to the low bidder, By2Minus Paving.
Public comment. Commission action.
Mr. Chair, just one question. Just, I see seven bids and all of them under our estimates. Is this just the changing market environment and people more hungry for work?
Yeah, so the estimate used Cold-in-Place Recycling costs that were quite a bit higher than what we had seen in Minnesota or Iowa, just because it's, it's new to this market, the contractors have to travel here. The prices were very competitive for Cold-in-Place Recycle. There's a couple companies that bid on that subcontracting work, and then the prime contractor, By2Minus Paving, they are not a local contractor, but for the last couple of years, they have had a mobile plant set up in this Colton Hartford area, and they provide good competition for local contractors. We saw lower asphalt costs on this than what was in the estimate, and that estimate number was based off of some projects that were recently bid in Sioux Falls.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that with a comment.
Please.
I've had an opportunity as a liaison to meet with Jacob in the last couple of weeks. Still need to do another one soon, but I've been pleasantly surprised at some of the bid openings that we've had that were substantially less because of change in the environment.
All right, additional comments? Call the roll.
Kipley?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Consider bid results and award recommendations for Project MC 2012 Structure 50 087 120 Replacement and authorize chair to sign an agreement with Earthworks Enterprises pending South Dakota Department of Transportation. Concurrents, bids open December 11th.
Yes, this bid is for a structure that is 8020 funded through a South Dakota Big Grant. It bid on the same day as our, our roadway south of Colton did. We had 11 bids, which is the most bids I've had on a project in the past, which was very good, and we bid this two different ways. We bid it both as a precast structure or a cast-in-place structure. The precast structure was substantially lower than the cast-in-place structure, and Earthwork Enterprises was low at $689,000. Our original budget estimate number for this project when we submitted to the state was 1.7 million. So the pricing is very competitive out there right now for roads and bridges in our area.
Okay, public comment on this agenda item. Commission action.
Make a motion to approve. Excuse me.
Motion, a second. For the comment? Call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize a 2024 budget supplement request to the Sheriff's Office Budget using insurance reimbursements. Captain Bosman.
Good morning Commissioners, Joe Bosman, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. First off, I'd like to say thank you and congratulations to Commissioner Bender, who was our Sheriff's Office liaison. I know on behalf of all of us, the Sheriff's Office and Sheriff Milstead did an amazing job as working with us through many different large-scale events over the years, budget questions, whatnot, so we really appreciate the time and the effort that you put forth to the commission. Thank you. This morning, I have in front a request to supplement two items from insurance proceeds to our Sheriff's Office budget. These were items that came late end of year, so it was after the deadline when Susan Beeman from the Auditor's Office had already submitted the standard budget supplement process for insurance proceeds. So these are expenses that are applied to the 2024 budget in the Sheriff's Office, which insurance money has now come in. So we would request that those insurance proceeds be applied to our Sheriff's Office budget to help cover these expenses that we unexpectedly incurred.
All right, public comment on this agenda item. Commission action.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Third.
We're covered. All right, call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Consider bid results and award recommendation for courthouse improvements and authorize a chair to consider, authorize a chair to sign an agreement with Great Place Construction utilizing ARPA funding. Bids open December 11th. Good morning, Mark.
Good morning, Commissioner. Mark Krins, Facilities Department. So correct, on December 11th, 10 sealed bids were received and opened. Great Place Construction was the low bid at $339,999. The project completion date for this is June 1st. Bids have been reviewed, and I recommend awarding the courthouse renovations project to Great Place Construction at the contract price of $339,999. Are there any questions?
Public comment. All right, this was a lot tighter bid, wasn't it?
Yeah, they were all really close.
Yeah, okay. Confidence, okay. Public, I'm sorry, commission board action.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second. I just have one other comment. I believe this is the final ARPA funding that we have money available for, so with the approval of this, and I think today's the deadline, right under the wire, that all of our ARPA funding will be allocated out, obligated, not all spent yet, but at least obligated by the requirements, so. All right, roll call.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. All right, last agenda item. Establish appointments to the Minnehaha Lincoln County Board of Mental Illness and Minnehaha County Review Board of Developmental Disabilities. Morning, Tom.
Hi, good morning, Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer. So as was noted, this, these are for appointments to the Minnehaha Lincoln County Board of Mental Illness and the Minnehaha County Review Board for Developmental Disabilities. Basically, all the individuals on this board, their terms expire on January 4th of 2025. The board for, the Board of Mental Illness is a joint board with Lincoln County, so there are cross appointments. Lincoln County will be taking a similar action, they may have taken it last week or will take it next week to appoint the same individuals. Some information about the appointments themselves, their three-year terms, no regular layboard member can serve more than two consecutive terms, and none of these individuals on here will have met that criteria. So I would recommend approval of this with one final note that we will be coming back before you to ask for an appointment for an additional layperson for, for a Minnehaha resident layperson. Aaron Johnson, Tom Weirheim, the co-chairs of the Board of Mental Illness. Aaron tried to be here earlier but got pulled away. They do have hearings today. They'll be providing an additional name within the near future so we can round out the boards, but I would recommend your approval of this.
Excuse me. Public comment on this agenda item. Commission action.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second. Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. All right, we are at the opportunity for public comment. Public comment is limited to five minutes? Five minutes per an individual, 30 minutes total, and must be on anything or can be on anything, cannot be on anything that was on the agenda. So if it's a non-agenda item, we take public comment on it. Otherwise, agenda items are done, we are done with that. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jean Childs, and I live in Lincoln County. And my notes are scribbly because they kept changing throughout with some attitude stuff happening. I'm looking forward to us working together, making our election process constitutional again, and God bless Leah, Mike, and all the others who worked to over, who worked overtime to run our election process as smoothly and as efficiently as possible within the parameters of corrupt E, S, and S and all its cousins. The lady who represented League of Women Voters, she didn't say her, I couldn't understand her name, sorry, she referred to us as a democracy. We are not a democracy.
This is an election item, we've already done the election briefing today, so, you know, please.
Okay, on behalf, sorry, on behalf of the staff and volunteers, Mr. Commissioner Kipley, we have a terrific leadership. That's why we are willing to work so very hard to support her in any way we can and to learn from her. Hand-counting ballots at the precinct level is the solution to this problem, clear and simple. Thank you.
Cindy Meyer, Minnehaha County. I just want to, I just want to add an observation that Commissioner Kipley, you were so kind as to say that, you know, we need to bring new blood into these nominations for the Planning and Zoning Commission. After you nominate a former commissioner, how is that new blood? Birds of a feather is all it is. You guys have to keep control, and that's the way you keep control, is by just recycling people into all these positions. You're not a bit interested in bringing in new people, and we all see it happening. And the other thing I want to say is, I was a volunteer that came back on Wednesday morning after I had been here till 1:00 in the morning. I got a call first thing Wednesday morning if I could come back in and help count ballots, absentee ballots. I was one of those in the room, and I am offended to think that you think something nefarious was going on there, going on in there as we were counting ballots. Do you realize those Yuakava ballots, you have to verify signatures? First, you have to chisel them off through all this tape that Leah was talking about. You chisel them off, trying not to destroy anything, and once you get them chiselled off, then you have to go through and verify a signature. And the signatures that we were verifying were a scribbled line, and I think when Mr. Bog came in the room, we were trying to verify a scribbled line. And I said, I will not verify that as an accurate signature because you're comparing it to another scribbled line on another piece of paper. That's what the holdup is, is in this process. And I find it insulting that we get blamed for maybe doing something in there behind closed doors. We didn't even know the doors were closed. I did not know the doors were closed, so don't be sitting there smirking at me. You know, I think if, if Leah pulled each one of you out of a burning car, I don't think you'd have the audacity, or you don't, you wouldn't have the courage to tell her thank you for what she just did. You guys have got so much resentment towards her, it is just pathetic.
So since it has been said that Leah has no credibility, I would like to remind you that this came out of a commissioner that falsely, I repeat, falsely accused Leah of committing a crime. I think we know who has no credibility here. And Mr. Kipley, you also stated that Leah was trying to throw everybody under the bus, not take responsibility. Everybody else's fault. Yet 10 minutes later, Commissioner Kerski says the prior auditor wasn't his fault, it was somebody else's fault. We have a lot of double standards up here. And Commissioner Bender, you wouldn't allow me to answer. You seemed more interested in attacking Leah. I also was in that room. I had gotten a few hours' sleep that night, but I came back to replace somebody that had been there all night long, and that includes a lot of the staff. Kim can verify that, she was here all night. They were all very tired. We were wore out, and them doors automatically lock when you close them, because several times throughout the night or throughout the day, whatever, you'd walk in there, you'd walk through that door and it'd be shut, and somebody'd have to open it and prop it open again, because once in a while, it would accidentally get shut, and they lock. We were in there working our asses off, and all you can do is present to the newspapers that we were in there doing something nefarious. All the things that Leah presented to you, that presentation was long. In my opinion, it was long because you guys are always attacking her, and she was trying her best to show you what's all involved in an election. to show you what's all involved in an election. There was a lot more going on that night than the next day. And you just are so smug, it's just, I can hardly stand it up here. And all you might get better feedback in working with the auditor is if you weren't always in attack mode. She has done an incredible job with that election. And yes, Jen Blyenberg was the only one that poked her face in and complimented Leah. You started with a very nice compliment. I don't know why you ended up attacking her. You can't see the good she's doing. And Mr. Kipley, I'm still waiting for an apology that you falsely accused her of a crime. You're sitting up here. How dare you, and then call her not credible. That is inexcusable. And I'm really sad that this commission, the chairperson, sticks up for you. We can't get up here and talk about prior stuff on the agenda, but he can talk about anything he wants. You've told me that twice now. You need to take a hard look at how this operation is run.
Dan Kipley, Minnehaha County. I think I'm gonna try to lighten it up a little bit. But first off, on a serious note, Commissioner Bender, I've known you for over twenty years now. And that's ironic that I've known you as long as you've served with the school board in the county. And I know you're a person of faith, family, country, and county. So again, thank you. And I appreciate all you and Michael have done for the community. On a history note, I had the opportunity to visit Greece, and I know Jean's been there as well. But going through all the museums there, what I learned quickly is that Greece is the birthplace of democracy. In the city of Greece, back 500 B.C., they had to have six thousand people attend to have a quorum. They had five hundred city councilors and fifty board of governors that had to be, seventeen had to be on site 24/7. And I was going through this museum, the only thing I could think of is, I bet you Chris Larson from Comfort King wished he had a time machine. He could have sold a lot of mattresses to the, the people that were working there, because they had to be there 24/7. And then I'll leave on a lighter note, too, that with the election, or the new year here, we all have a resolution. And I'm gonna ask Commissioner Cole Hayesy, my friend over here, that he actually make it here for the Pledge of Allegiance on his first day, because that would make him be here on time. So again, Cole, welcome next month. Thank you, Commissioners, and happy new year.
Some of that sounds like the old me, but I do have, I do have some concerns that I want to bring up to the County Commission. And this has to do with the contract with the, I would say dead body contract, but the contract with the coroner. You know, ambulance services in this county, we struggle every week to make payroll. We struggle every week to.
We need to have your name for the record, I'm sorry.
You could have said it.
I, I know, but you, everybody else has to say it, so we need you to.
My name is Jay Major. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, on behalf of MedStar, on behalf of a Minnehaha County resident, and on behalf of the taxpayers, financial responsibility. So for years, we've had the, the contract pick up people from their homes and take them to the, to the morgue. And we did it at first because nobody else would do it. And to be honest with you, I lost money the first few years I did it, at $200 a body. This year, without any knowledge to us, the Sioux Falls Police and Fire Departments decided they weren't gonna help lift anymore. They weren't gonna help with, with the type of things that we need. I'm not gonna get into it here, because it can be disgusting, but they're not gonna help anymore. And the end-all for MedStar was, is when we were in a house, and a gentleman died of a heart attack, and we had some officials from Sioux Falls in there, and I'm not gonna tell you if it's fire or police, but one of the two, and we needed help moving the patient from the bed to our cot. And they refused to help. Now, when that happened, the little money that we were making on this contract is no longer valid for me anymore, because we're not taking care of the people that we need to take care of in the appropriate way. For some reason, you're a taxpayer when you're alive, but you're not when you're dead. For some reason, the leaders of the Sioux Falls Fire and Police think that we'll help lift you if you're alive, but we won't help lift you if you're dead. And I couldn't do that. And so after that happened, the people in the house said to the police officers, get the blank out of my house, and they helped us lift their loved ones onto our cot. My job as a paramedic is to take care of the alive and the dead, and to absolutely be part of the healing process when somebody does die. And I couldn't do that anymore, because I, especially for the money we were getting. So I put my notice to quit in. And the notice to quit was a thirty-day notice. I talked to your administrator, he says, you know, go a long ways with the council if you give us sixty days. And I said, well, why would I do that? He says, it's in the contract. I said, you have sixty days. That ended that. I'm gonna get to the very end of this now, because I would hope that you would want to contact me and talk to me about this. At the very end of this, I was told that the council didn't want to go above seven hundred or seven hundred and fifty dollars for what we had to do. I said, I can't do it for that. I was told that the council didn't want to go above that. And so he said he found somebody to do the contract. And I'm thinking, oh, good, well, they found somebody for less than that much money, because I already in writing put what I would do it for. This company is not only doing it for more money, but they get thirty-six thousand dollars a year to be on call. I wasn't making that much on the contract. And that's just to be on call for a deceased person, not for a two-minute response. And the county, that county refuses to give us any money to help us with our county business. I have to work for everything, and I'm willing to work for it. I don't get a subsidy as the others do. And I lose money, a lot of money on 911. And, and so when that happened, I made a phone call and said, would you please get the commissioners or whoever together so that we can discuss it? And I heard nothing from that. So here I am, speaking with you a month later, because I wanted to give us some time and think about it, as a taxpayer, as a businessman, as a Minnehaha County resident. And believe me, I'm not upset at the company that got it from Lincoln County. I'm not upset at them at all. They just do what's best for their business. I'm upset for the fact that you're willing to pay somebody else upwards into fifty thousand dollars more than I put my bid in for to do it in the first place, which I've been doing for almost seven years, at a loss. That's where it comes up with me. And I don't know how much this commission knows about this, if these were even brought up, but you'll say to me, well, did you put your bid in? Well, when he asked me what I would do it for, I told him, in writing, on paper. And so that, I would consider that a bid. I would consider that a bid. I told him what we would do it for. He never told me that he had somebody over seven hundred and fifty dollars that would do it. I didn't even come to the commission meeting, because I believed that he found somebody to do it for the monies that you were willing to pay. So here we are, with lost revenue, no subsidy in the county, providing 911 services with seven vehicles, and all that money of providing 911 services comes out of my pocket with my race rescue team, with my wheelchair chanting team, and my transfers I do out of the ambulance service. And I was told that the county would look favorable if I gave them sixty days. Does that sound favorable to you? Thank you for your time. I'm immediately get ahold of at MedStar Ambulance. I would be, I would be more than happy to talk to any of you. There's my five minutes. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Mathis. I work with Leah in elections. I just wanted to say Leah did a, she did a tremendous job. I know that we can all agree on that. But from someone that worked the 2020 general election, I know that they went home that evening, and then they came back in and stayed. She told me they were tabulating on ten o'clock on Wednesday night. So I don't know why none of that has ever come up, but I know that, you know, we worked, I worked a thirty-six-hour shift that day. You know, when it got to be twenty-four hours, that's six o'clock the next morning, I was shot, Leah was shot. The whole thing that happened in there with the, the closed doors, there's video of it. Go look at the video. We encourage you to. The people that were in there, we are upright citizens of this county, and we fully trust. We, if, if there's something that was done wrong, we, we want to know. But I, I bet you there's nothing that was done wrong in there. I just wanted to tell you, Leah, she does a tremendous job. She's under a lot of stress, and a lot of it, you know, I know where it comes from. We, we just, you know, if we could be, give her grace and work with her, I think she'd even do better. But I would encourage you to look at the film, make sure there's nothing that was done wrong, because I want to know if there was something done wrong, too, because my name is on this election as the election coordinator. But, you know, just wanted to say that. And you know what? There is this easy solution out there, and it's something that none of you want to even acknowledge. It's what we have written in the South Dakota Constitution to do hand-counting in the precinct. If we did that, all of this would have never even happened. We'd had all the results come back to us, and we'd have just recorded them. And in the South Dakota codified law, it still talks about hand-counting. So, you know, I've, believe me, I've sat here thinking on my own, what could we do better? How could we improve the situation? That is what I come up with, is we don't have ninety thousand ballots sitting here, waiting to run through the tabulator. We do them in the precincts where the people want to do the counting. What, why, and I know we've had people come here and talk about the expenses with ESNS. What are we doing? I mean, I, I'm just trying to make sense of what's going on, and that really came to my, my mind, is that why can't we just go back to what's in the South Dakota codified law and do that? And then we'd save a ton of money for the county. We do that, and then the people would have their transparency. Thank you.
Jessica Palama, Minnehaha County. Yeah, if we're talking about inefficient and wasteful, a really good way to be inefficient and wasteful would be to spend a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in another tabulator. We could hand-count in the precinct for one-fifth to one-tenth of the expense that we do now. We've analyzed the data from the receipts from counties all across the state, and estimated the hand-counting, how many volunteers would be needed, the counting boards, if we go back into the precinct. There's actually a statute in the state law that says that the unofficial results of the counted votes must be sent back to the county by the superintendents with all the other materials from the precinct. And if it is not included, it's a class six felony. That hasn't been erased from the statute, but we're still doing it in every election. So I just would like to say, with the IT issue, the Minnehaha County IT department historically has reported the election results and maintained possession of the election management laptop. In Minnehaha, or sorry, Pennington and Lincoln Counties, the laptop has always been under the control of the auditor, and they do the reporting. This is the only county in the state that the IT department has possession of that laptop and does the results reporting. In case you haven't noticed, the IT department is under your purview, not the purview of the auditor. She doesn't have control of those employees. They answer to their boss, who's sitting back there. The same people, so these same people in the IT department have been working there for at least a decade, have been involved in doing this process with the election management system, and have reported all of the other elections, these same people. So since when has this ever happened before, with these same people from the IT department reporting the results, suddenly didn't report the results for hours and hours and hours until it was a major issue that could be a hot-button issue for people that like to talk? So the same people that have reported the results for many years have suddenly changed their procedure and delayed the results reporting to total vote for half a day or longer a day. The same people modified their procedures, waiting for the absentee to be counted before reporting a total precinct. Newsflash, progress reporting is the norm. The same people in the IT department were less than cooperative with Leah when she came into office. They had her laptop for months and wouldn't hand it over, until one of those famous released rumble videos by our group showed that the IT department had that and wouldn't hand it over, and due to public pressure, finally gave the auditor her laptop. The same people in the IT department threatened Leah physically and verbally, physically by towering over top of little Leah, and verbally telling her, demanding that she tell the public that she has full faith and confidence in the election process, where they were not going to assist in the election. The same people in that IT department committed major security violations, deleted federal election material, both video and election documents that are required by federal law to be kept for twenty-two months. They were also under an order and under litigation, and they were not there. They used uncertified election equipment, which rendered every election in this county that was counted on that laptop unreliable, uncertifiable, and actually illegal. They broke several state laws in the process. We've seen the history of the hostility in Minnehaha County, and so I'd just like to say, media, think about it. Whenever you've ever seen this happen before, the same people were in charge of this process. And now they're more than willing to sit there and be quiet and let everybody throw Leah under the bus. So if anybody should be under this kind of grilling by the County Commission, I would start with someone that's actually under your purview, which is the IT department head, and start investigating their practices with multiple security violations. And if we can find this much in a very non-transparent environment in this county of illegal activities, uncertified equipment, uncertified, unserialized flash drives, deleted federal election material, and multiple other things, what's going on with the rest of our county IT? So I think that there should be an investigation launched into this. I provided you a chart of all the violations, and if there's any more to look.
You're done.
I'd start with Mr. Monti. Thank you.
Auditor Anderson, just a question for you. Your name was used in all these accusations. You know that they are a hundred percent wrong. Are you gonna allow that with your name to be put out there? I've got an IT director back there that is steaming right now. You expect his help, and you're allowing one of your people to make accusations that are outright lies.
This does not follow the agenda. However, a lot of the things that she stated are not lies. They did have the EMS laptop, and under several emails, I had asked to get it, and I did not get it, until I finally told them that it should be in my custody. The laptop itself is not a cert, was not a certified. That's why we ordered a new one this year, because it was an HP laptop, which was not certified by the EAC. The flash drive issue, that is a definite thing that was happening. They were transferring results back and forth from a internet-connected computer to the non-internet-connected computer, which is the EMS laptop, using the same flash drive back and forth. That is a violation and should not happen, because it can introduce, since the EMS laptop was not properly updated with virus protection, and the new one still isn't either, that could introduce some problems to that laptop. So that is correct. And yes, Monti came into my office one day unannounced. We went in the conference room, and he did give me a stern, very talking to about making sure that I relayed to the public that I was confident in this process, or his IT people would not assist me. When I involved Tom in that conversation, I suggested that I would find my own IT people, and then that resolved itself. So, and then also, our IT department does have a lot more experience in all of these topics, and I would like to work with them, and we have worked well together lately. But they are the ones that have been doing this for years in transferring those results. And again, I was not made aware that they weren't transferring anything until later in the day, when I was told they were waiting for the remaining absentee results. I would like to put this behind us and move on to the ways that we can improve this process. I do feel like that this commission scrutiny... I do feel like that this commission scrutinizes everything I do much stronger than any other auditor. And like we talked about in the 2020, yes, Mr. Letts did leave and stopped counting the election during the night of counting, when that, obviously, that codified law was changed also, so that that cannot happen anymore. But I was not going to leave and stop counting. Our team did an outstanding job. They stayed, they were tired, they were exhausted, and we still got the work done. And as I stated before, I think we did an outstanding job.
Okay, we're at 30 minutes for public comment, so I'm going to call that to an end. Move on to non-action commission liaison reports. I know it's been a holiday in a few weeks. Anybody do have any special liaison reports? Okay, non-action commission discussion. Moving on to non-action commission discussion. Are we going to executive session? All right, we will have an executive session immediately following this meeting for the purposes of South Dakota codified law. 125, 2134, and 6. I will look for a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Motion carries. We are in executive session.